All right. Everybody ready? You're ready?
Yep.
Right, being seven o'clock, we will call the common council meeting to order. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, all righty. Clerk, roll call has been taken.
Yes, sir.
All right. Adoption of the agenda. We do have, we do have an amendment to that as right off the bat. I would like to add the utilities manager to that. So we'll need that amendment as well with the...
Okay, so move, your honor, with the amendment.
Motion made.
Second.
Second by Mr. Haas. Any additional, addition, additional, there. Additional corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, move on to approval of eight sixteen twenty twenty-two common council minutes, eight thirty-one twenty twenty-two committee of the whole minutes, and eight thirty-one twenty twenty-two special common council minutes. Your motion? Motion by Mr. Beesaw, second by Mr. Fache. Any additions or corrections to that? With being none, please cast your, please. Let me back up. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Authorization to pay the bills. Mr. Dorsey.
Mr. Your Honor, make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million, three hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Mr. Dorsey made the motion, second by Mr. Fache. Any additions or corrections? Please cast your ballots. Dennis?
Ah, come on, you stupid thing.
Motion carried by all. Public hearing regarding, regarding rezoning at one thirteen East Hancock Street to R three, multifamily residential. Like to open the hearing. For public hearing regarding rezoning at one thirteen East Hancock Street to R three, multifamily residence. Any public comment? Any public comment? Last call, any public comment? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Move on to public comment. Any public comment? Final call for public comment. Hearing none, we can move right along into standing and special committees. We'll start out with the Board of Public Works. Mr. Barrington, you start.
Thank you, Your Honor. Board of Public Works met on Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Members present: Barrington, Ritchie, Herter, Dorsey, Haas. Council members: Mayor Herter, Bob Beesaw, John Fache, Tim Roberts, Melinda Croy, Steve Groth via Zoom. Others present: Chad Hirth, Robert Garsky, Ginger Arnt, Ben Gruehl, Judy Radke, Mark Simon from McMahon Associates, Alan Bray from Johnson Block CPAs, Scott Belile, the stenographer, Citizen Jim Jaeger, Jane Murphy, Public Services Administrator. Meeting was called to order at four forty-five. The first item was consider hiring agreement for acquisition services for the twenty twenty-four North Water Street project. The North Water Street reconstruction project, being a federally funded project, requires the city to hire a qualified acquisition company for land acquisition and limited temporary easements. Mark Simon, the project engineer from McMahon Associates, received two proposals for the project with Moss and Associates LLC being the low bid forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Public Works Director recommends going with Moss and Associates. Motion by Haas, second by Herter, to recommend hiring Moss and Associates for the services on the twenty twenty-four North Water Street project. Motion carried by all. Roberts abstained. The next was wastewater treatment plant. The notes were included in the projects. At this time, there are no questions. The next item was present rate study findings for the wastewater treatment plant. Consideration of an additional employee at the wastewater treatment plant. Treasurer Finance Director Judy Radke introduced Alan Bray, CPA of Johnson Block and Company. Mr. Bray presented the sewer rate study for the New London Wastewater Treatment Plant. The study figures for four employees, three employees and four employees. The packet includes a rate study cover letter, the rate study, and a comparison of the new rates along with other communities. Ben Gruehl summarized his calculation on residential monthly averages also included in the packet, comparing a three employee to a four employee comparison. Motion made by Herter, second by Ritchie to recommend section seventy, four employees with a note noted, new fixed rates and a new variable rate with a zero percent return. Motion carried by all. Twenty twenty-three Public Works Budget. Public Works Director Garsky presented the proposed twenty twenty-three Department Public Works operating budget, which is included in the packet. The operating budget covers administration and supervision, streets, sanitary maintenance, sewage plant, public facilities maintenance. This information will now be given to the Treasurer Finance Director for observation. Therefore, no motions were made at this time. The next was to review bid tabulation and consider contract awards for Wolf River Avenue redevelopment utility construction. A total of seven bids were received for the utility project. The low bid came from PTS Contractors Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand. Per hour, the motion is being made based on the closing sale of the Swiderski Park property, which is to take place on September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Dorsey moved, second by Haas, to award the contract to PTS Contractors Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and forty-one thousand, pending the sale of property on September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Motion carried. The Director's memo was included in the agency packet and was reviewed by the board. Avon Lima and Lion Street Reconstruction will start final road grading, asphalt work to start by mid-September. We plan to bring in the bid tab on the consideration for a contract award for the coating of the fire department garage floor. However, there were no bids submitted, so we will look and send it back for more bids. Discussion on large item disposal services. No further discussion. Motion by Dorsey, second by Herter, to adjudge at five forty-five P M. I bring to council tonight an ordinance amending municipal code ten point zero three sub zero five to reflect a height change of noxious cat, grass and weeds from one foot to eight inches. This is the second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington?
Second.
Second by Mr. Herter for ordinance amending municipal code ten point zero three subsection five to reflect a height change of noxious grass and weeds from one foot to eight inches. Second reading. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Dorsey, thank you. Motion carried by all.
I bring to council a motion to hiring Moss and Associates LLC for acquisition services on the twenty twenty-four North Water Street project.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haas for hiring Moss and Associates LLC for acquisition services on the twenty twenty-four North Water Street project. Any further discussion on that?
That'll be at forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by nine, abstention by one.
Consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance on one reading.
Motion made by Ms. Barrington? Second by Mr. Groth for considering waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carries ten zero.
I'm...
Hold on, Mr. Herter?
Yep, I'm going into the next item. The council should be aware that the consideration for the contract award for the Wolf River Avenue redevelopment utility, I'm going to recommend at this point in time that we not follow through with that recommendation for contract award. As most of you know, since the...
You're not there yet.
We should have one motion.
You're on the sewer rate yet.
Oh, we're on the sewer rate study, I'm sorry.
One yet.
Okay, I've moved to an ordinance amending municipal code thirteen point twelve sub four sub A setting sewer rates based on water treatment plant sewer rate study schedule seven A for four employees.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried ten zero as well. Mr. Hirth?
As I got ahead of myself. So as the council should be aware, since the Board of Public Works made that recommendation, there has been a shift from the SE Swiderski project that they're going to be proposing. We're going to be talking about that at the Economic Development Committee meeting next week. Because of that shift in their project plans, I'm going to ask that the council not award that contract at this point in time because it may not line up perfectly with their new plans. So I would recommend at this point in time, do not make a motion in second to move forward with that contract award.
That being said, that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. With that, we can move on to finance and personnel. Mr. Dorsey.
Mr. Your Honor, excuse me. Finance personnel had a special meeting on Wednesday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Members present were Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts and Beesaw. Also present was Mayor Mark Herter, Haas, Croy, Ritchie and Groth. Finance Director Judy Radke, City Administrator Chad Hirth, City Clerk Nicole Lemke, Library Director Anne Hunt, Museum Director Christine Cross, and Director of Public Works, Robert Garsky, and Utilities Manager Jay Basset. Others present were Jeannie Schleish and Jamie Gilson of USI Insurance Services. Barrington and Beesaw approved the agenda. Presentation and discussion of Robert Health Partners Insurance and Delta Vision and Dental. Because of the City of New London's current insurance provider, WA Trust is terminating as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Chairman Dorsey recognized Gilson, who represented the results of the medical market analysis and suggested alternatives to replace WA Trust. One of the alternative plans presented, the broad network plan by Robin Health Partners, most closely resembled the current plan and therefore was a suggested replacement. Croy and Dennis Herter to approve Robin Health Partners broad band, or broad network and Delta Vision and Dental Insurance carriers with the same contribution effect of October first, twenty twenty-two, carried eleven zero. At seven fifty-six, Dorsey and Croy moved into closed session per the following statutory exemptions: nineteen dash eight five sub one sub C concerning employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Carried eleven zero. Roberts and Groth to reconvene to open session. There was no statement or action from the closed session. There being no other business, Roberts and Barrington moved to adjourn. And then we had our regular meeting. On Wednesday, September seventh. Members present were Dorsey, Fache, Barrington, Roberts and Beesaw. Also present was Mayor Mark Herter, Haas, Groth via Zoom, Ritchie, Herter and Croy. City Administrator Chad Hirth, Finance Director Judy Radke, City Clerk Nicole Lemke, Police Chief Schleter, and Director of Public Works, Robert Garsky. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Roberts to approve the agenda. City Clerk Nicole Lemke presented the license and permit fee recommendations for two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Lemke went through each license and permit type and compared them to two other communities. Thereby placed substance on the recommendation for the committee's consideration. There was discussion on amusement, amusement device fees and where the city should continue to license those devices. A motion was made by Beesaw and seconded by Roberts to approve the recommended twenty twenty-three fee with the exception of the amusement device's line item. Carried eleven, or ten to one, Barrington against. The fee for the amusement devices will be included in the October finance agenda for further discussion. Finance Director Radke continued the conversation from the last finance committee meeting on new revenue sources. Additional revenue has been implemented for two thousand twenty-three, including some fee increases and salary distribution for employees that worked on the creation and continue monitoring of the TID districts. Other options that could be considered and were mentioned were referendum or utility special charge. Radke stated that the stagnant amount of shared revenue distributed by the state over the past twenty years and the inability to increase tax revenue above net new construction was a broken system that needed to be examined. She then turned the conversation over to Administrator Hirth for a League of Wisconsin presentation on how her community and elected leaders could get involved to become a voice for that change. Administrator Hirth shared a League of Wisconsin municipalities' critical local servicing, funding, lobbying campaign. The presentation highlighted the increase in revenue the state has collected over the last twenty years and the stagnant dollars that are passed down to municipalities to help with local services. The League will be hosting numerous meetings across the state to help local government employees and elected officials to join together to meet with their state representatives, to voice their concern at the lack of state shared to increase their revenue. The date for the twenty twenty-three budget presentation will be Wednesday, October twelfth, at five fifteen. The finance directors' monthly reports were presented. The finance director's report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, a motion was made by Roberts and seconded by Fache to adjourn. The next regular scheduled finance committee meeting will hold in the council chambers on October fifth at five fifteen. I make a motion to approve the monthly license list.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, second by Mr. Herter for approval of the monthly license list. Any further additions or corrections to that? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
And motion for ordinance amending to fees for the clerk treasurer's office.
Motion made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Fache for ordinance amending fees for the clerk treasurer's office. Please cast your ballots. That motion's carried ten zero as well. Is that all you have, Mr. Dorsey?
I'm sorry, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Yes, Mr. Herter?
I'd like to make a correction on, for the August thirty-first. I was present at the meeting, but they don't have me down.
Amendment noted.
For the special council meeting? Or for the...
For the special?
Finance committee meeting, the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first of the...
That John's listed twice.
Okay.
Got that?
Yep.
All right. All right, we'll move along to the park and recreation. Mr. Beesaw?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Park and Rec, Rec Committee met on Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Meeting members present were Bob Beesaw, John Fache, John Haas, Bernie Ritchie, Steve Groth via Zoom, April Amador, citizen member, Jim Jaeger, citizen's member. Other council members present were Mayor Mark Herter, all persons, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, Dennis Herter and Melinda Croy. Others present were Ginger Arnt, Director of Parks and Recreation, Robert Garsky, Director of Public Works, Chad Hirth, the Administrator, Jane Murphy, Public Service Administrative Assistant. Meeting was called to order at five fifty-one. Haas made the motion, Ritchie approved. Motion was moved to approve the agenda. Motion carried by all. Public input, there was none presented. Twenty twenty-three budget proposal. The packet memo included notes on the proposed twenty twenty-three park and recreation operating budget. Ginger Arnt also presented a PowerPoint. Departments included in the operating budget are Recreation, Parks, School, Senior Transit Service, Washington Senior Center and the Washington Center Gym. The proposal was now to go to the Treasurer Finance Director for observation. Therefore, no motion was made at this time. Twenty twenty-three fee policy proposal. Packet memo included an overview of the twenty twenty-three fee policy proposal and increases incurred. A detailed twenty twenty-three fee policy schedule is also included in the packet with changes noted in red. Notable increases included a ten percent increase on general programming, swim lessons and personal training. There will also be non-residential fee instated on all facility rentals. Ritchie made the motion, Fache made it seconded, moved for the approval of the department and parks and recreation twenty twenty-three fee policy and schedule as presented. Motion was carried by all. That'll be back to the council. Director's report, Director's report was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Notable information are three open positions in the department. One full-time parks caretaker, one full-time administrative assistant and one part-time administrative assistant. Service anniversaries were Morgan Gergis, Recreation Supervisor, four years, September fourth; Mike Frieden, Senior Transit Driver, thirteen years, September twenty-first; Patrick Gaiet, Parks Caretaker, eight years, September twenty-second. Chairman's report was none presented. Committee members report Jim Jaeger on the final cost of insurance for the memorial portion of Taft Park is one hundred and forty-one thousand and the shelter is eleven thousand. Jim also noted the one remaining addition to Taft by the veterans is having grounding, ground lights installed by the four new walls. Jim also mentioned the transition from the Veterans Memorial Foundation to the City of New London will take place sometime after Veterans Day, twenty twenty-two. Future agenda items: twenty twenty-three proposed capital project equipment, trailering mowers. Adjournment, there being no further discussion. Motion made by Fache, seconded by Haas, moved to adjourn at six thirty-eight. Motion was carried by all. I would look for approval of the Department of Park and Recreation twenty twenty-three fee schedule, policy and schedule.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw?
Second.
Second by Mr. Herter for approval of the Department of Park and Recreation twenty twenty-three fee policy and schedule. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. Is that all you have, Mr. Beesaw?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Move right along into the planning commission, would you please?
Planning commission met on Thursday, August twenty-fifth. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Those in attendance were Chairman Beesaw, Jason Basset, Donna Gabbert, Susie Steingrabber, Mayor Mark Herter via Zoom and Jamie Walbrook. Others in attendance: Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator David Vincent, City Administrator Chad Hirth, Robert Garsky, Public Service Director, Melinda Croy, District Two, John Haas, District Two, Tim Roberts, District Four, Eric Fowler, representing Cedar Corp, Planning Facilitator. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Group participated in the pledge of allegiance. A motion was made by Basset to adopt the agenda and seconded by Steingrabber. Carried by all. The July twenty-eighth, twenty-two minute meeting minutes were reviewed. A motion to accept the minutes was made by Gabbert and seconded by Steingrabber. Carried by all. The first item on the agenda was a request for rezoning at the property located at one thirteen East Hancock. Dave Vincent provided dialogue explaining reason for the request and information needed to allow the commission to decide based on the facts presented. Basset made a motion to approve and to move the request to the council for final consideration. A motion was made by Steingrabber and carried by all. Public hearing requirement for a rezoning request is scheduled for publication to meet the public notification deadline. The next item, PM on the agenda, was a site plan discussed at the First State Bank. The zoning administrator reported that the information provided was adequate to meet the code requirements and recommended approval to allow for the project to continue. Gabbert made a motion to approval to send to council for consideration, seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. The third action item on the agenda was a final plot for the Retzloff Beckett Road development. There are two considerations that were not on the final plot provided. The zoning administrator explained the two items and informed the planning commission that the two items will be added to update the state. A motion to approve the final plot, the two changes, was made by Gabbert and seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. The next agenda item was discussed and update on the comprehensive plan. Chapters four and seven were discussed, which dealt with the community facilities and intergovernmental cooperation. Presenting Eric Fowler with Cedar Corp led the discussion. Eric also gave an update on the citizen survey with over ninety respondents to date. The last agenda item for discussion was an update from the zoning administrator and billing official, Dave Vincent. He informed the board that the software for the billing department was now being used to track all the cases for billing, zoning and court enforcement for the city. The department is nearing completion of the fee schedule proposal and finishing up budget for planning commission discussion approval. The next meeting date has been moved from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two to September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. A motion was made to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingrabber, carried by all. Meeting adjourned by Chair Beesaw at approximately six twenty-nine. I would look for approval for the, approval of the final plot for the Retzloff Beckett Road development.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw? Second by Mr. Haas for approval of final plot for the Retzloff Beckett Road development. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried ten zero.
I would look for approval of the ordinance repealing section one three dash dot zero eight two wellhead protection and replacing with section seventeen dot eleven dot dash C wellhead protection. This is the second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw, seconded by Mr. Barrington? Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion is always, also carried ten zero.
And I would also look for ordinance zoning newly annexed property that is owned by crew of PM Enterprises at seventeen eighteen Mill Street as B two highway commercial. This is the second reading.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ritchie for ordinance zoning newly annexed property that is owned by a crew of PM Enterprises at seventeen eighteen Mill Street as B two highway commercial, second reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And I would look for consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Mr. Barrington to consider waiving the rules to adopt an ordinance upon one reading. Any further discussion than that? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Beesaw, one more time. That motion also carried by all.
And I would also look for approval for an ordinance rezoning one thirteen East Hancock Street from the current R two one two family residential to R three multifamily residential.
Motion made by Mr. Beesaw?
Second.
Who's, who got that? Second by Mr. Roberts for ordinance rezoning one thirteen East Hancock Street from the current R two to R three. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Moving on to Economic Development. Mr. Dorsey?
Mr. Your Honor, New London Economic Development Committee meeting, committee met Tuesday, August thirtieth. Members present were Dorsey, Kapitsky, Haas, Thompson, Bishop, Croy, Adamovich, Fache. Others present were Mayor Mark Herter, Tim Roberts, Bob Beesaw, Steve Groat, City Administrator Chad Horst, and Jeff Agee. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Kapitsky and Thompson approved the agenda, carried by all. The July twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two meeting minutes were reviewed. Fache provided a correction in that the minutes incorrectly identified that he was present at the meeting. Haas, Kapitsky, motion to approve the minutes with the corrections as presented, carried by all. Horst provided a report on the sister city twilling process with Killaloo County Clare, Ireland. On August sixteenth, the common council passed a resolution authorizing Mayor Herter to sign a charter creating the sister city relationship with Killaloo, which Mayor Mark Herter executed that evening. On August eighteenth, Horst attended a meeting in Milwaukee and presented the charter to Mayor Tony O'Brien from Clare, County Clare, Ireland, which he signed and sealed the new twilling relationship between the two communities. Moving forward, Horst will see if there's anyone willing, would like to be on a sister city subcommittee to promote ideals and strengthen the new relationship with Killaloo. The city applied for and is awarded a one-day technical assistance grant with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. The grant will include a public visioning session with several professionals around the country to discuss and come up with idea for improvements to the downtown river alley. The event will occur on Tuesday, October eleventh, and Horst will publish more details as plans develop. An idea was discussed at a recent downtown revitalization committee meeting to possibly recruit volunteers on a monthly basis to walk through downtown and do some detailed cleaning to try to keep the downtown looking nice. The concept included purchasing some brooms and safety vests with the logo on the back showing some pride in cleaning up New London. Kapitsky and Hertz will continue to work with Downtown Revitalization Committee to firm up the plan. Horst presented information on the two thousand twenty three economic development budget. At this time, there are no changes proposed for the operating budget. Horst continues to do some research on potential billboard upgrades, which will include, which include that for consideration at future meeting once costs are collected. Committee members also talked about ideal for signage and marketing, considering a boost to the fast aid improvement program and possible transportation offering with golf carts or UTVs for the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four North Water Street reconstruction project. The Chambers Director's Business Report. Living Waters Assembly of God at four oh one North Water Street is removing the old glass exterior panels and replacing them with new siding. Rice's Greenhouse recently sold to a couple from Ripon, and they plan on keeping it a greenhouse. There are two commercial buildings in New London for sale. The current MK Flooring Building, the business is not included, and Hillby's Bowling Alley and Sports Bar, business is included. The former Bucky's Restaurant will be reopened and called Zero's Cafe. Riven, ribbon cutting events planned include Family Flippers on September fifteenth, Grand Cinema Theater reopening on October fourth. The Bottle Shop has a Chamber Business After Always event planned for September twenty ninth. The City Administrator's report, on September twentieth and twenty first, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is holding a statewide Wisconsin economic summit in Appleton. Horst continues to research options and costs for possibly converting the city's billboard to a digital format. There was no public input. Student member Adamovich commented that at the last meeting, he was tasked with reaching out to DECA students to see if there's any interest in marketing project as talked about in last month, and has a few students interested in the project. The next committee meeting will be held, scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty seventh, at five fifteen. Fache and Haas moved to adjourn at six twenty two. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Moving on to minutes and reports, them will stand as read in your packets, and we'll move into reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public. Starting off with the mayor's report, the only thing I have today is to congratulate and thank all of our city's service and anniversaries for your time and service. Thank you. Moving on to City Administrator, Mr. Hertz.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, for those of you who not go on social media outlets often, we recently published a video in regards to some of the questions we get on street reconstruction projects. If you haven't had a chance to see the video, but would like to see some of that great information on past and future reconstruction projects, the amount the city has funded and spent on recent projects, and exactly which streets have seen improvements due to the wheel tax, all that information can be found on the city's website at newlondonwi.org/streets. Secondly, we just talked about the new sister city relationship in the economic development minutes with Killaloo, Ireland. We have started some communications with some staff in Ireland, and our video producer Josh just finished up a new video talking about that relationship. I saw it twenty minutes before we came to the meeting here. It's really cool. We look at releasing that video tomorrow on social media, but for those in attendance tonight, it will be playing in the lobby on your way out. So check it out as you exit the building tonight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Moving along to Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. I got three anniversaries. Ashley Bosk was fifteen years, Steve Elliott four years, and Brank Gosh one year. That's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Director of Public Works, Mr. Garsky.
Thank you, Your Honor. Asphalt paving is complete on Avon Lima and Lion Street, and construction is in its final stages. Please be aware of workers because there is still some additional work to be done out there. Fabric will be pulled from the inlet soon as the grass is growing and repair areas in the repair areas and erosion is under control. The lime painting company will be in town this week to paint the crosswalk locations, and the street signage will also be going in soon. New London Utilities will be flushing the water systems next week. Please do not place any yard waste or leave debris in the roadway until the weekend before your leaf collection week. Clean streets during flushing keeps a lot of debris out of our storm sewers and our river, so. Cleaning out storm sewers is a costly operation, and plug drains lead to street flooding. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Garsky. I do not see our Director of Park and Recreation. Do you, does anybody have a report from her?
She's out of the office this week.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Fire Chief, I do not see him. Anybody have a report?
Just got one anniversary. Ryan Bederowsky's got twelve years in.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Last on the list is Utilities Manager, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. We participated in the voluntary PFOS testing provided by the DNR, and I'm very happy to report that we have no PFOS in our water system here in New London. On August twenty eighth, we had a service saddle break on Beacon Avenue. We had ML Construction make that repair on August twenty ninth. On September sixteenth, we had a pole struck on Beacon Street. Crews responded to check the pole. There was not enough damage, and there was no need to replace the pole. Joma Electric has finished their portion of work on the electric relocation for the Highway fifteen bypass. Our crews will continue to terminate wires, and we also need Spectrum to remove their facilities before we can remove the overhead conductors out there. And I'd also like to recognize Mike Pinch for twenty-five years of service this month with New London Utilities. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Mr. Basset. With nothing, nothing further, I'd entertain adjournment.
We had one comment from a resident down in the area of Lima Lima down there that said we did a really good job, and he was loving the type of work.
Beautiful. Thank you for that as well. We get a motion for adjournment?
To move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We adjourn.